See it's moved about an inch.
Um, so you had a deposit then if they break the rules. I mean, the, you know, I had a copy of the contract here.
It's like two.
I mean, they're giving.
Discount.
A lot of water.
And senior launch.
We were trying to get a tree to grow, so get a tree that's not easy to tell, you know, plant it. You know, and they.
I have one here.
So, so I, I planted this last one.
Yeah, so it's.
About two feet.
But I want to say that the security deposit, hold on. Oh, no, probably don't have that in the charter book.
That's probably was killing trees over water. You wouldn't know, you would have to talk to someone. I don't know what to do. Uh, I'm hoping this newest tree that I planted personally.
Yes.
Put out that high water. I did put a lot of topsoil, that's going to be saturated.
Maybe then.
Kill the tree.
Yeah, well, the other day I was, Joel, what are you doing? I says, I'm sorting my piles, what to keep, what do I have copies of?
All right, take care, okay? All right.
Yes, you can put it purposeful, there isn't much.
Right.
There, but you have a security deposit, something's wrong. Just keep part of it and there's your reason.
We are.
You give the reason, hey, here's.
Um, well, I think you take it, but, oh, can I run to the back? Thank you, appreciate it, I didn't realize my voice was going to be.
Yeah, that's okay, we can do it.
I should have known.
Thank you.
I mean, we could have covered ten million more things.
Yeah, we'll just, that's not a big deal.
I mean, there's quite a bit we could have been talking about. This meeting could have.
You weren't the only one that missed it, we all missed it.
Quite a while, so I'm sorry it took so long, but I'm glad Brian was able to give you answers right away.
We got to get Jennifer. Yeah, you put something in everybody's mailbox, did you guys go back to your mailboxes? You really don't need it for the meeting. Well, you know what, you might need the Tom Jordan one, it kind of just, it's just an email that sums up the contract. Yeah, put it in, uh, while you guys were in here, so.
I'm sorry, it took longer than expected there.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. Jennifer, I did put a couple of things in the mailbox, just the one thing you kind of, the other one's information. Let me see if I have another copy, where are you? Are you gonna go to your mailbox? Yeah, I didn't know if you had your key, okay.
Right here.
Then we'll start when everyone comes back. Big Cavs game. Yeah, play the Celtics at home.
Are you there?
Seven thirty, no, I think he sold his tickets. I think he sold his tickets. Probably got decent money for him tonight. Danny's got nice seats, third row.
Nice.
Right, uh. And he's in the Oswald Club, so you get.
You mentioned, yeah.
Yeah, you get all the free food and, uh.
How's Connor's doing in his team?
He's doing good, yeah, he's doing good, the team overall is not doing that good. It's a tough year, don't. Both teams, Varstady and JV, both really struggle, they have no height, they have good players, they don't have enough height.
My son's team isn't doing very well either.
Today, you know, if you don't have one guy that's at least six-six, six-five, you're done. They played, who did they play the other day, Hoben? Hoben's got like three kids, six-five, six-six.
Last season, my daughter's team played for him with Nate Norris, but there was a team that was pretty strong on the team and he couldn't have missed three pointers.
Yeah, well, those are the, those are.
One and another.
Those are the other ones, and they, they got a good shooting team, but they get, once they shoot, they get no offensive rebounds, if the team's a big team, that hurts. I mean, they're in there scrapping, but you just, you know, the six-one, six-two kids, six-three for a center just ain't big enough in the league they're in. See what happened with Hoben, they had a couple of little good teams and they changed the league. But they play California.
Oh, really?
Okay. They got small.
Yeah.
Orangeville Huddens.
Okay, well, we had a lineup at the mailboxes, so.
You had a lineup?
I'm sorry, we're really.
Are they selling something good there?
No.
We need an ice cream social.
Oh, there it is. As you guys know, if somebody wants to make an excuse, you know, for Brian.
Yeah, I saw the emails.
Okay. Make sure that baby isn't locked, and I think we can get rolling here. I checked it, it was going good, and they are taping it, so. Okay. Like to welcome everybody to the committee of the whole meeting of Tuesday, February fourth, twenty-twenty-five at seven sixteen. Uh, we're running a little late this evening, uh, there was a recreation community life committee meeting at six and it ran over. Um, and they had a lot of good discussions, so that was the reason for that. Next.
Councilman Nielsen?
Here.
Councilwoman Kanzoni?
Here.
Councilwoman Allen?
Here.
Councilman Spitznagle? Councilman Weeden?
Present. Uh, Mayor Colgarap?
Yes.
And members of council, if I may, uh, uh, offer a motion to, for, to excuse Councilman Brian Spitznagle from tonight's meeting due to illness.
Second.
Second, vote on the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kanzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Weeden?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, council, hope Mr. Spitznagle feels better for next week. Nikki made a note that we don't have pledge allegiance, but we've been doing it, so if we do it real quick here for our next item.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Also like to welcome any residents or non-residents that are watching the live stream tonight. Any comments related to the agenda items before we move on to them? Okay. Um, all, we did roll call, I forgot to say all of councilors present along with our fiscal officer Nicole Sell, our fiscal clerk Melissa Sandrick, and our law director John Montello. Not all of councilors present, Mr. Spitznagle's not here tonight. Uh, and he was excused, he's missing due to illness. Okay, legislation, we have ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash one, that's the NOPEC Energize Community Grant that we've been receiving pretty much every year. It's, uh, the ordinance is basically to accept the grant. Any questions on that?
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jennifer.
Nikki, I know I sent you an email, um, and I just want to be sure it's correct, but that grant is for six thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars?
Sorry, I must have typed that, it's six, yes, six thousand eight hundred and sixty-two.
Okay.
And we have a balance from twenty-twenty-four of six thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine.
Thank you.
Do you want to give the expiration dates on those two, so we have a little time?
Uh, we have until November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six for the twenty-twenty-four balance, and November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven for the twenty-twenty-five award.
Okay, so I'm sure Mr. Kalman, uh, Joe will find a way to use that. Okay, any questions on ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash one? Okay, well, it will be on next week's COW meeting also. Okay. Then we have item B, ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash two, amending, uh, twenty-twenty-five appropriations. I'll let Nikki talk to that, you want, Nikki?
Uh, so the amendment was for, um, our insurance and bonding in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, there was also an amendment for opers and Medicare for Rob's building stipend that I missed in the twenty-twenty-five budget. And the third item, the water meter and repair fund, that was, that invoice came in actually higher than we had anticipated. It, it just increased more than we expected from last year, so.
Nikki, that, that's just the increase, correct?
Correct.
Any questions on that?
Uh, no, Mayor Colgarap, I have a question, not necessarily on the actual ordinance, but related to the ordinance, and, and that is when, uh, we have additional appropriations. Um, does the village have to file a new certificate of resources with each?
Once it's approved through council, we'll send it to the county.
Okay, that's each time.
And no issue. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, with that said, you're probably gonna see more of these, um, I know me and Nikki had a discussion on, on, on. Is instead of waiting to the end of the year or thing, you talked about maybe if they're, she's gonna, uh, they're gonna put them together and ask, so we're constantly staying up to date.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, have a better handle on it, so it's a little more on Nikki and Melissa's end, but I think it's gonna be better, uh, housekeeping for us here and keeping the books straight.
So, I just, so the other question I had is, so when we, Mayor, when we do this, when we add additional appropriations and we change the, um, certificate of estimated resources, can, how does, what? How do we know where those additional resources are coming from to cover these additional appropriations, how does that work?
Well, the county usually will determine if we have enough estimated resources to increase the budget, and that's based on what we report to them, um, on the tax budget and their information, so they'll send us the certificate. And basically, it makes sure that the expenditures that we are appropriating, appropriating don't exceed those numbers on that certificate.
Okay. Any other questions related to this ordinance?
Nope.
Okay, well, if there is, we can always answer them next week, they'll be on next week's, uh, COW meeting also. Okay. Then we have item C, resolution twenty-twenty-five dash six, accepting the national opiate settlement, creating a special revenue fund. Uh, I'll probably let, well, John and Nikki both know about it, this is something that, uh, was actually at a federal level, and there was a settlement, and we are a part of it, and, uh, there's now, there's some revenue going out to the communities, and I'll let Nikki explain why we have to have a separate fund, and what it can be spent on, and how much amount, what your amount is, which is important, so go ahead.
Well, basically, the reason we need a separate fund is because the auditor of state issued a bullet, bulletin, um, and it explains it here in the resolution, um, that the Ohio, One Ohio Fund shall be placed in a separate revenue fund and used only for approved purposes as required by the One Ohio MOU.
Is that something we, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Is that something, Nikki, we could look up online, One Ohio?
I believe so, John?
Uh, sure, I would, I would guess so, yes. Or, or the bulletin, uh, you know, you can look up as well.
Yeah, I was just curious to know, you know, where those funds can be utilized.
Oh, I see, it's, uh.
Mr. Mayor, is this something every year is going to be coming through that we need to continue on with, or is this just a one-time deal with this money and what it gets used for?
I thought it, go ahead, I thought it goes in the fund, and then we've created the fund, we'll only get the one-time settlement, from what I understand, and then we use it out of that fund for the uses. But I, I think, you know, uh, once that, those funds are exhausted, then that, that fund goes away. You had something, I thought, we talked about that, kind of said part of that, um, what, what it can be used for, like Narv cans, things related to addiction and things like that.
That's what I believe, but I, we would have to, uh, look up the MOU.
Yeah.
Okay.
For sure, but I believe those are the purposes, anything related to addressing, um, opioids and drug issues and things like that.
Right, it had some restrictions, but it was basically to keep it in that lane, to use it for those purposes, to help with addiction and, uh, the opiate crisis.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jennifer.
Nikki, is it correct, you said we got seven thousand and two dollars and twenty-six cents?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions related to ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash two? Oh, yeah, yeah, twenty-twenty-five dash six, I should say. And we can have that, we'll find, we'll look up there, what, what it can be used, uh, because we're gonna have to know that anyways, because we're gonna wanna spend it for the right things.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to, um, clarify that we haven't actually received it yet, but we will, so that's why we need to have the revenue.
Okay, thank you. Other business, um, you've probably seen that email that I received from Mr. Jordan. He's asking us to amend his agreement, it's the same agreement, but raises, I'm reading his letter, you guys have from him, but raised the monthly amount by two hundred dollars. Um, and it raises the hourly rate by twenty-five. The hourly rate is, is if he exceeds the, uh, retaining, retainer part of his agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jennifer.
What was the monthly amount prior to?
So, uh, well, two hundred times twelve, so go ahead, I'll let you amend it up, but.
Uh, it was twenty-five hundred, so he's increasing to twenty-seven.
Okay.
Mayor Colgarap?
Yes.
So I have, I have two questions, one is on the, um, current monthly, month, twenty-five hundred dollar monthly, and the request to twenty-seven hundred, and as well as item two, the excess hours. Uh, how, how are those, how are the hours for the consultant, uh, tracked? How does that, could you all explain that?
Tom, Tom tracks them, he gives us an invoice with the hours listed for what he, um.
Do you have one of the invoices with you or no?
I don't have them, but he'll list the total hours.
And then if it's out, he'll list total, and if it's outside of that, then he, he lists, uh, those hours.
Okay, so in, any, any idea what's, you know, what the average monthly hours are from month to month, I'm sure each one month is gonna vary.
We got, we get a, we get a invoice from him, and then Nikki, uh, creates a PO, correct, and then sends out, so we'll, we can look at those invoices and figure that out. Because he separates it out, his, his retaining fee plus his, if there's any additional hours.
Okay, thank you.
There hasn't been a real lot, uh, we had a few, when we had, we're having quite a few meetings, you know, over the, uh, redevelopment of the Ford plant. Um, you know, we attended some meetings, this and that, you know, at the school board and here and stuff, but overall, it's pretty consistent, well, we can get that for everybody, we have that.
Maybe you might look at, uh, his budget last year, what he, you know, what his end of, his, his line items, and see what his twenty-twenty-four figures were.
Yeah, we, we have that. Because he, he invoices us, and then Nikki or Melissa, um, create a check and.
What?
Attach it with it.
Uh, the other question I have, Mayor, is, is the item three on the list, um, about the consultant, uh, additional commission fees, uh, based on a certain, certain.
Oh, you're in the, you're in the ordinance now?
No, I'm on Schedule B. Oh, yeah, I'm on Schedule B, I thought we were, yeah, we were already.
No, I was just looking at the letter, I was just reading from this letter to kind of convince.
I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay, you're, you're in the consulting services, everybody's there?
Yeah, Schedule B, the last, last, second to the last page, B one, and, um, I, you know, as, as well, would like to see, I know, I know we had, there was some discussion, uh, I don't know if it was in the, at the last increase, but there was some discussion once before regarding a provision like this, but the, uh, trigger point was, was significantly higher. I think it was like a ten million dollar payroll or something, it wasn't two million, so, uh, this is a, this is a quite.
No, I think it's the same, I mean, me and Nikki talked about that.
You talked about that?
Yeah, I think it's the same.
You have that information for us?
Where, where are you at, exactly, let me.
Second to the last page of the packet, of the whole packet, it would be Schedule B.
Yeah, it, um, two million dollar payroll, I think that's the same, this two million dollar payroll is, you look at, um, that's, uh, two million dollars, net payroll taxes. Well, we'll check that, I thought it was the same, we'll check, it might be ten, we'll, we'll look at that.
So, can you explain the net, explain that, Nikki, net payroll taxes, that's, two, that two million dollars net, or two million dollars coming in too?
That we will get.
That we will get, from those, from those.
Ford plant.
Or anywhere else.
Former Ford plant.
Yeah, from the Ford plant, and that was when we thought that one company was coming in with five thousand employees, look at what we're, what we're getting with, you know, what we have, it's not, if we met that, that would probably be no problem paying that, if we met two million dollars of payroll.
True.
Even if it was changed, two million net payroll would be unbelievable. Would you be happy, Nikki?
Yeah, I would.
But we'll confirm that, because, uh, I thought we looked at it was the same, but let me, let's make, we, we could, we have time for that, we can.
If you can verify that.
Yeah, no, no problem, no problem at all. You better not be trying to sneak one in on us, right? He, you know, he does, there's quite a few things that people don't realize, like he does, he's the chairman of our, um, jet, which means Nikki and him attend, um, so it's kind of nice, we have a third party, uh, signing off on that, you know, making him an outside contractor along with the law solic, the law solicitor, who's the secretary for, um, Sagamore, and then, uh, two, uh, they have two appointments on there, which are one of the trustees and then the police chief.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So you're saying monthly, he gives you a report of what he's working on, the meetings?
He gives us an invoice.
With the breakdown of?
Not, let's take a look at breakdown of a separation of his retainer and his hours that go over. But I don't, it, it doesn't list exactly what he, you know, each job, because, you know, it's, we have a contract with him too.
It just seems, yeah, I'm not sure what all, like, we're not, I'm not involved as much, I don't know what he's doing, so, but I'm sure you do, you know, for his monthly fee. I mean, we've been very busy in the village, we have our growth, three years ago, I can't say we had growth, but now we do, and there are things to keep track of, and more future growth planned.
Right.
So he's involved in all that.
But it's not all about growth either, it's about retention, he spends a lot of time just talking to companies that are here too.
Okay.
Um, and it's something we talked about maybe before you were on council, um, in this climate, well, the climate's gotten better, but what we got through before that was maintaining our companies, retaining them. A lot of companies, and we did have some move out, but that's the, uh, retaining companies is hard today too. You know, if somebody's interested in, uh, business loans or whatever, they'll call me, leave me a message, and then I have Tom call them, and he'll help navigate them through that process too. Uh, so there's a lot of PR stuff that, um, he does, but I could get him, uh, he, he would, he could, I could get a detailed thing to refer it if you would, if you'd like, that's, Tom doesn't have a problem at all with that. I, I can just, I do know this, if we had to post that job, it would be a very hard job to fill, um, communities, uh, that's another job that's out there, people are looking for a good economic development consultant, there's just no doubt about it. The part I'm very comfortable with, and I know John is, is, uh, Tom knows the business, there's, there's no doubt about it. You'd have to almost sit in on a meeting with him to, uh, understand it, huh, John?
Yeah, he's very knowledgeable.
And I know you guys have sat in, sat in on some.
Yeah, over the years, I've always seen him around.
Right, and when we've done like the negotiations with the school board and stuff, he's very familiar and very comfortable with what, let's say, they want, you know, because they have their agenda, they want to, you know, their agenda is to get as much money for the school system. And we're okay with that too, but our agenda is also to get as much money for the village, too, plus try to make the school system whole, so we all work together, but that's just a small example, but yeah, that's not a problem. Let, let, let me get together what we have and get the, the amounts and, and go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jennifer.
Would this come through then as a resolution for appointment, like we would have for Joe Jalati, or John, or Rob, or Natalie?
I think we just amend his, we'll go ahead, you say.
I'm not sure how we did it la, last time, I, I don't have, I didn't get a package or, or I forgot to put mine, uh.
It's probably, did you go in your box?
No.
Okay, go on, it's in your box. Okay, no, I forgot. Okay, but, um, uh.
Or do we just, I'm sure we had to do something.
Yeah, we, we made, we, it was a, we, it was a, it was a resolution we had, because we passed his agreement, so we probably have to amend it however you think we should do it.
Yeah, because we just, it's just not written up on the agenda or as a normal, like, resolution, you know, it's just a agreement.
Because I, I wanted to discuss it with you first, that's why I didn't put it, I didn't put it out there.
I was out last meeting.
Yeah, John was, but the real reason was, I just, you know, I, a lot of times I feel like if I, um, and I know you guys don't make me feel that way, but I, I think it's just me, my way of operating, that if I put it in a resolution form, I'm already kind of past the point of discussing it with you, so I like to kind of discuss it, and then we get a, an agreement, and we put it in a resolution. Then it's not out there as a resolution, and we got to take it off, or, you know what I mean? Like, the, the community grant, that's no brainer, who's not a, uh, the national opiate thing, that's another one, but something like this, maybe we need further discussion, or you want Tom to come in before I would put it, that's the reason. You know, I, you'll see it's, you know, I, I won't have John write it up until after, you know, I don't want to put it out there and it gets defeated, that's not the, the purpose of that.
Right.
You know, unless it's something that we have to, and, and, and thinking that we have to put it out there, and people can have a, you know, the purpose of something like this, discuss it, and not comfortable, maybe, you know, maybe somebody says, well, hey, we're comfortable with this amount, but maybe not this amount or something, you know? Or like the questions we have tonight, you know, then we talk about it in a COW meeting, and, let me see, we may go for there, go for that, that's the reason. I always felt, when I was in your position, sometimes if something was put out there, I'm kind of in the position that I have to vote on it, and maybe I'm not as comfortable, or didn't have enough discussion on it yet, so I guess, just my way of operating. Go ahead.
Mayor Colgarap, just a quick comment, I, I think the way, uh, the Walton Hills, uh, council meetings are set up, they're set up for plenty of discussion before any vote should take place. You know, with two COW meetings proceeding and council meeting, you know, that's, that, that speaks to, there should be plenty of discussion before any thought of a vote takes place. Um, and I have a question, because for clarity, I'm looking at the consultant agreement amended and restated, it's like page, um, I don't know what page it says, page two of the, uh, I don't know what page it says. Page two of the document, consultant agreement amended and restated. And I have questions on, well, my basic question is, what is the time period for the current contract and the future contract? And I raise that question because in item, whereas one, it speaks of the consultant agreement dated March seventeen. I'm sorry, May seventeen twenty twenty-two. And then in uh number four, there's a term that talks about April first twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, and continuing through March thirty-one twenty twenty-three. So just, you could just for clarity, say, what is what is the term of the current contract? And what is would be the term of the the new uh the new contract? Just, you know, I'm not sure what it is.
Go ahead.
Since professional service, I don't know if we passed legislation last time. We'll have to look and see if we did or not.
Okay.
But it's a contract. It's a.
It's a contract.
A one-year.
We should be sure. We need to know how long it is.
Yeah, what's what's the actual start date? And the other reason I I raised that is is uh if it's, if it was either April uh or May. The fact that this is before us in February is is a good thing, because it does give you some time. You know, to work through whatever questions and to have, you know, proper readings, that kind of thing, without having to, you know, rush it. But in addition to that, it would, it still would be nice if things like this for all of our contractors could come. Prior to, even though they may, their periods may be later in the year, prior to us actually ironing out our our budget for the year. But this is.
Exactly. Yeah, our twenty twenty-five budget is done, and now this is coming in front of us. And I don't know, Nicole, if you put any kind of an increase on his.
I did not.
Code at all for this year, so maybe, yeah, it needs to be looked at, and when these contracts start and finish, you're right, right?
But I mean, for all, all of them.
Mm-hmm. Everybody.
Yeah, if you have them, even though they may start in February, or they may not start in March, or may not start to April. If these kinds of documents could come forth in the preceding year, so you have time to actually chomp through them. You know, in terms, in time to appropriate them for the current budget. It would be nice if we could do that.
Well, the mayor did just receive this too on January twentieth.
And and and, you know.
Out of his control.
To be honest with you, I'm not going to go to the, let's say, have you thought about a raise, or you?
No.
You know, I, if if I wouldn't have received this, would be, I wouldn't, it'd be fine. Persons.
You'd still be under whatever the contract was.
And I'd be okay with that. That's just, you know, because I don't care if it's a contract, it's an employee, it's an elected official. Nobody refuses poor money. I haven't met that person yet. And that includes me, so no, I'm not.
Mister Musk doesn't want any money.
What's that?
Elon Musk doesn't need, isn't taking a fee from my.
Because he's got enough, okay?
He's got more than everybody.
But that's no problem. Yeah, I I agree with you. I I understand what you're what you're saying. It does help with the budgeting of it and stuff, so that. And I think we've done a pretty good job. This is, we don't have a real, you know, too many outside. But, okay, so I'll get I'll get uh more information on his contract and uh. Some of his invoicing and stuff, and we could look in in the total, what it was for the year. Kind of look at, we can look at even a couple of years if we want to see, you know, you mentioned, you know, I know the last, this last year was probably the busiest year. For Tom, but it was busy leading up to that, you know. Once it starts happening, it's more busy for, let's say, the building department and Rob, because now they're and Nikki and. Most because there's permits and things like that and fees, but but it's a good busy. This is, this is a good thing. This is a good, a good busy. If we see him doing, you know, more, then that's a, that's all a good thing, because it's it's all positive. Okay, so we'll get that information. And we'll go from there. I don't have anything under other business. We might um. Have an executive session. There is some uh. Potential litigation to talk about that we talked about before, which has gotten closer. Maybe the uh. Service employee just kind of talk about that. I know there was information, Ryan distributed some information from in the past relating to retire and rehire. I did talk to uh Ryan Keegan from HR Partners to review that too. See where that's at, because I I think it's something we're probably putting in our ordinance, as we talked about. John's looking at that. And I know you guys got some information, and if I get anything from Ryan, I'll distribute it too. So it it's just a matter of uh kind of seeing what we want to do with that. And then let's see, what else? I think that's really, I I sent this, we received this letter. From our Chris Rene, our county executive, which we appreciate all the help he's uh. County and and Mister Rene can give us, and he has been good in the village along with. Some of the former county executive too, so we appreciate that. I will, or have already thanked him for that. What else do we have? I think that's it. Does anybody else have anything under other business that they'd like to talk about before we?
Just the county, Mayor, just the comment on on this, the letter from.
Yes.
From the county. It's good to see this. Um, and I know we have some other, some other requests out there. The CDBG for the industrial area, and don't know what the timeline it is. Any idea of the timeline when you would typically hear back?
I think I, well, I I might have, Joe might have heard for one, one of past me. I passed it out, and I gotta. Let me, I'm gonna have Joe put something together. I need, because we kind of need an update on that. I'd like an update on uh. What you guys talked about, some of the things in the infrastructure committee, just to see where that's at. So it's a good time right now to give us an update on where this. So I'll get that from Joe, an update for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And that will include that. There's been a little bit going back and forth about the sidewalk.
Yes.
So that's, because the O-Dot's involved in that.
They want us to sign an agreement, basically.
Yeah, they want us to sign an agreement, so, well. I knew I I had to talk to Joe and.
That just came over like Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, that just came over. And there's been so much discussion back and forth. It's kind of getting settled out.
Mister Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
There's a comment here from Milan Verzic. This past Saturday, Bedford City School Board hosted a community forum that presented the progress on the building project. And then he also commented, we were told that they'd be hosting similar meetings in the village in April, May, and June. Have those been scheduled yet?
I haven't been contacted by the school board. Last year, when I, or whenever it was, I was contacted by um. Danielle Turner Birch. I haven't been contacted by anybody yet. Maybe they put, they might have put out a schedule, but as far as Walton Hills, having one here, I haven't been contacted about that or asked what dates.
That's interesting, because the superintendent made it very clear that she's been in constant contact with all four communities, all four mayors, and has been going regularly to meetings.
Well, I am in contact with her. Maybe she referred that. I'll have to check my emails, Jennifer. Maybe she sent me an email and about those meetings with the school board, and I overlooked it. But the statement that she's in contact with me, me and her have not related to that issue. Have had uh conversations related to our tax sharing on the on the new building. We've been working on that. They got the agreement. In fact, we received a uh request from their attorney today for more information. I did contact her. I had residents contact me about the meeting Saturday, and I don't know, were any of you there? Did they talk about any levy levy for?
No, they would not talk about that. They were only there to specifically talk about the construction of the buildings.
That's why I had a resident call me saying they were told that they will be discussing the future school levies. So I told that resident, let me find out, so I contacted Crisanda, Cassandra Johnson, our superintendent. And she told me, oh, that's not on the agenda, and I let those residents know that. So um what I was told was going to be on agenda, and you guys were there, was what was posted relating to the uh the building project of the buildings. So, but yeah, I'll look, I'll look back at our emails. To me, I don't mind hosting them here at all. I was, in fact, I was the first one to host one here when. I was the first one to host it. We'll leave it at that. And we actually hosted two of them. I think Danielle was here twice. So, yeah, but I can look at that. That's not a problem.
Mister Mayor, I didn't know if you listened to our recreation meeting or not. Did you want, do we have time now to just give a brief rundown of what we went over? Or do you want to do that at a later time?
No, well, it's up to you guys. I'm I'm okay with it.
Well, he was the only one not there.
You were the only one not here, so I didn't know.
I don't even update me another time if you want, yeah.
I mean, there are a few things I want to get with the police chief and a few other things that.
And I just wanted to know, no, you know, um. Where, you know, like myself showing up, other council members showing up outside of the meeting, that's, it's up to, you know, if you, but you're not required to.
Right.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We know.
In in fact. Two former administrations back, the mayor didn't even come to the COW meetings.
We saw you in your office eating spaghetti.
Now, I appreciate having.
Come to the COW meetings, just.
Mister Whedon and and Jennifer Brown. I appreciate them being here to give their input also during the meeting.
Yeah, so that makes it good. Exactly.
And we had Brian texting on the phone, even though he wasn't able to make it.
Yeah, so we were actually all of us.
And that makes it great, because.
And Nikki and Melissa.
It's easier for you guys to explain to me than me trying to explain to five of you. One person's a lot easier to explain to than five. And Nikki and Melissa were here, so any of the financial ends of end of it and stuff, but. Yeah, and I was listening to, I just had some other things, some emails.
Eating spaghetti.
Yeah.
Well, she did say for the summer event, she does have the garage sale, the dates planned already, the summer concert in the park.
Yeah, go ahead.
Already planned, and then she's hoping for the baseball game again, so those would be the three events. So, and then there's just other things also with the Parker program. We had talked in the past about increasing the fee, the fifty dollars. And I I feel she should go ahead and go through with that. I mean, it's still a huge discount. It's a wonderful benefit to the residents. And it's just a very small increase, so.
Well, if there's anything that needs to be voted on or um.
Well, Brian.
Resolutions or anything, then we.
Brian had looked up the ordinance, and it's open on the ordinance, that the fee could go ahead and just go the fifty dollars more.
Okay, good.
We did check on that.
So you guys are good with that? She's just gonna move forward? Is everybody's good with that? I'm good with that.
Yes, okay.
I know problems important, you know. And I know we talked about that quite a bit before in twenty twenty-four.
Mayor Coleridge.
Yes.
And to Diane, I I didn't speak about this in the meeting. However, um, direct department did put together a pretty good spreadsheet comparison of all the communities. And I think it's worthy of a good study in terms of where we are versus our others and why we do what we do. It's just, I think, I think it's worthy of a good study. And, you know, who who can attend and who can't attend and all that. Some pretty good information from a comparison stage.
To the surrounding communities, yes, Natalie.
Walton Hills does what Walton Hills does, because Walton Hills do what Walton Hills do. I get that. I'm just saying, but it's still, I think, all of that comprehensively is worth taking a, taking a good, hard look at.
Thank you.
So with that said, you looked at those comparisons?
Yes.
Okay, so are other communities doing more or less?
Way more.
Well, I don't know what their.
Okay, way more.
I don't know what their, what their programs consist of. I'm just saying, in terms of the amount and who can attend, you know. Who can attend, you know, whether it's, you know, in different, just the fee scales, you know.
Does it show their budget amount?
Your total budget for the program?
Yeah, what it costs to, if they're doing, because that's the bottom line, though. Right, are you guys gonna, I mean, we can do, we can do more programs with, I mean, it's up to you.
I think they have the children really filled with a lot of programs to keep them active and and busy. You know, some of the other communities don't even have it open to other outside communities.
Right, right.
But there's a handful that do, and some of them have that pre daycare or after daycare because of the working parent. It needs a child to be there all day. We don't have that in our program. They had talked about it in the past. But we definitely, I mean, it's not something that we make money on at all, far from it, but it is a benefit to the residents. And and the few non-residents that do sign up for the program. I mean, it's.
Oh, I agree.
Still a wonderful thing, and it's really reasonably priced, and and it's it's great for the kids. It really is.
Right, no, it's good.
Uh Natalie definitely put a good program together that I think we should just go forward with for the year.
Okay.
And then, like we do every year, continue going over it.
I agree.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Um, we did do, I was on the rec committee, when we did offer the pre-care and after-care. And it was not used at all. I mean, if there was like one or two kids that maybe came an hour early. And maybe just like one or two kids that needed to stay the extra time, so we just felt that it wasn't worth it to keep doing that, because it didn't fit. But that might change in the future too.
It may in the future.
You know, as we get more younger families in and stuff, so something we could always look at again to have.
And we do only have ours for seven weeks. A lot of communities have it for nine or ten or eight. They do have it for a longer period, so their price is higher. But you have to take into consideration, now you've got a couple more weeks of payroll and functions.
Right. Oh, I think we got a nice program that runs well. I have not received over the years, mostly just compliments, so it's a good thing. Any other comments?
Mister Mayor, there was another com- comment from Milan Verzic.
Verzic.
Uh, the next school board meeting is two, six, twenty-five.
School board meeting, or they're separate meetings?
No, their school board was going to be meeting this Thursday, the first and third Thursdays. They said residents can come and ask questions. If any residents are listening, you can ask questions at the meetings, but they have to be submitted in writing prior to. And, yeah, they, it's.
Yeah, and their school board meetings are posted on the Bedford City School District website.
Right, so that's this Thursday.
Right, right. Those meetings are always open to the public.
Right, it'll be an open meeting as opposed to the third Thursday, it's more the passing. Kind of like our COWs versus council.
Any other comments? Any other thing related to other business?
Mister Mayor, oh, did you have some?
Yeah, Mister Mayor, I just, quick question. Uh, we were gonna check on whether we needed an ordinance uh for the increase on the pay for the uh.
Well, we would need to discuss that with all the council and stuff too.
For the event coordinators, with like a paid base.
But I was gonna, we were gonna ask John, we were gonna ask John.
Do you have a recommendation from, did you guys talk about it? Do you have a recommendation from, did you guys talk about it, did you, did you forward a recommendation from the rec committee?
Probably do that in executive session.
Did the rec committee agree on it?
Yes, yes, we did, to move forward with rest of council to discuss.
What was the amount you agreed on?
We didn't agree to a, a dollar amount because of the fact that it's the larger, we first need a little more control of the time that they're there, these event coordinators. They go there, say, nine o'clock in the morning on a Saturday, and they're there till noon or one, people are decorating, they're waiting for caterers, florists, balloon people, whatever they're all waiting for. We need to have more of a controlled time and not be spending three, four hours already of their time for this one event. And then they're coming back at four and working all through whenever the event ends, and then cleanup starts. So it's really not, uh, I don't know if it's not relayed properly to the person signing the contract, event time, stopping, starting, uh, that shouldn't be an eleven-hour day for our event coordinators to get this small fee.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I think since it would involve employees, it should, the pay should be discussed in executive session, if we're going to have one next week.
Yeah, if it meets the criteria, yeah.
I'm not sure what you guys are talking about, but.
We're talking about the pistol, the, uh.
Event coordinators.
Event coordinators.
We still have a range, don't we have a range for them, I'm not sure.
No, not for an event coordinator.
Because they're like a, they're like a.
Okay, I get you.
They receive a ten ninety-nine, correct, Nikki?
Right.
So they're a contracted employee.
Oh, I get you.
When did you, when did?
Not an employee.
When did? Well, I guess we really can't look at that. You look at, so it's been what, one year or two years since we've been using them, one year, just?
I think about one year, we had five of them, and we've lost two of the five, so we're down to three.
We had six.
Three.
Three, we had six at one time, okay, which isn't enough, we do need more to continue the programs for this year even, that already, I mean, the events that are already scheduled.
And after one year, sometimes you tweak things, you know, that's.
Right, and that's really how we left that part with them, that we need to go over some of these things, we need to, if somebody is because of whatever reason excessively extra hours, maybe it could come out of their security deposit, you know, they would know, hey, you know, you've lost some of it, be, I don't think they realize, you know, that they can't be using our event coordinators for extra five, six hours for an event. And they're, you know, sitting there waiting for deliveries and whatever else is going on, and it, it's not what their job originally was supposed to be.
That's, we, we can have a meeting if, if we can't, if we're allowed to have an executive session to discuss the wage, that's, that's fine. If not, we'll have to have an open meeting, that's all. That's what, now, right now, that the seventy-five dollars, uh, goes to, is passed on to the, the renter, correct? So they're new allow, would do the same then, probably.
Go on to the renter.
But those are things we want to discuss.
Mr. Mayor, one of, one of, one of the things that they brought to us is seventy-five dollars is taxed. So it's, they figured.
So they're down to sixty dollars, and now, even for a small event,
Right.
It's really, you know, it's giving them anywhere from six to ten dollars an hour, basically.
Right.
And they're not being used as they were intended to be used, as just an opening and closing and making sure everything is intact before and after.
Okay.
Yeah, they feel they have to sit there that whole eleven hours or ten hours, six hours.
Well, they were told they have to by Natalie.
Yeah, that's what they said, we had a couple of them come in tonight to talk.
Do you think they don't need to be? Does council think they don't need to be? We should go back to the original thing?
I think it needs to be discussed, I mean, if these events are really taking that long and decorating and then, and if they have to be there for that whole time. I mean, otherwise, that's why they give a security deposit, there's damage at the end of the night and they're doing their checklist, they have to go over it with the person signing the contract, so they see, you can't just make up something, you know, down the road, it has to be discussed then and there.
Not only that, I get it, I get it, okay. Well, we'll, if we, we'll see what we can discuss in the executive session as far as employees, and then if we need further discussion, you can have another recreation meeting, or we can put the recreation meeting in a committee of the whole, like we did with other stuff, if it just pertains to one item or whatever, so we're kind of not on a marathon or whatever, you know, whatever works for the committee.
That sounds good, thanks, thank you.
And I could even talk to you during, and, you know, we can always put it on next COW meeting too. You know, if it comes out of it, and we can, okay, I got that, got Joe Gilati. All right, any other, uh, new business or old business, other business?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for a motion for, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Okay, before we do that, I'll just, no, I just want to go, so we're gonna, we got everything here, we're good there, we'll get, we need some more specifics for item five, um, Mr. Gilati, we need a review of current grants that are out there.
For Joe, or?
For Joe, did I, yeah, for Joe Gilati, um, review the current grants that are out there, and the infrastructure projects, how's that? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. And then we'll see about the executive session, if we might have one. If I didn't have one for those other things and decided to do it i- in the council meeting, if we moved up, if we didn't have everything ready for the COW meeting, cannot wait for the event thing too, then okay, I don't need to contact, but then we would just, so whatever, whenever we have an executive session, we're good with that, okay? Because I, sometimes, I, if I, if we don't have it, then we might move it to the final.
Sure.
Good. All right, okay, I'm good, I got it all.
Um, Mr. Mayor, one, one quick question?
Yes.
Ray, is first quarter over?
I, I, I don't know. I'm not getting an update, it's not updating.
It hasn't even started yet.
I'm sitting here, I'm sitting here saying, man, I could have ran down there.
All right, then, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Vote on the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Canzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spitsnagle? I'm sorry, Councilman Whedon.
Yes.
Thank you, four zero, uh, vote to adjourn at eight oh eight P M. Thank you, everybody, have a good week. Stay warm and dry, I guess it's gonna get cold.
Yeah, starting tonight.
Yeah, and then it's snowy.